All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight it's April 22nd. We will start our regular Willow City Council meeting. Meeting starts at six o'clock. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Joe, will you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Pride, absent. Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Thank you.
City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Okay. Next up, we have some ceremonial matters. These are five different proclamations. What we'll do is we'll read the proclamation, present it to you, and then if you have something to say on the matter, then we'll give you some time after that to say it. So the first one that we have tonight is National Mental Health Matters Month. So. Whereas Mental Health Matters Month is a time to raise awareness about mental health, reduce stigma, and promote access to care for all. And whereas mental health challenges affect one in seven adults in California, impacting individuals living with mental health conditions and also their families, friends, and caregivers. And whereas approximately one in 24 Californians live with a serious mental illness experience... Oh, sorry. Living with a serious mental illness experience significant difficulty functioning in everyday life. And without proper treatment, they may face a life expectancy up to 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas every day, millions of people confront mental health challenges, often feeling isolated and reluctant to seek help due to the stigma associated with mental illness. And whereas recovery is possible and with the right support, individuals can overcome mental challenges and lead fulfilling lives. And whereas it is essential to create an environment where everyone feels safe and supported and reaching out for help, fostering a community where mental health is treated with the same care and respect as physical health. And whereas access to mental health, support, and eliminating the stigma surrounding mental illness are crucial to ensuring the well-being of all Californians. And whereas the city of Willow's is committed to increasing awareness of mental health and creating supportive stigma-free environments for all residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Matters Month to raise awareness about mental health, eliminate stigma, and promote access to the resources necessary for all individuals to live healthy, balanced lives. And witness herof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 22nd day of April 2025.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share with you guys that CalMesa developed the Take Action for Mental Health Campaign, who releases an annual toolkit for May's Mental Health Matters Month. The theme this year is mental health as a continuum to acknowledge that mental health can be a spectrum or continuum. For Mental Health Matters Month, Glen County's Behavioral Health Transitional Age Youth Center, also known as TAY, is hosting their annual change festival. This year, our event is called Sprouting Change. The event is youth-led, and we will have tablers such as View College, Mainzell, and Community Behavioral Health, just to name a few. And we'll have activities such as building a community garden, painting, and open mite. We're also hosting an assist training, which is suicide intervention, and it will be held May 5th and 6th in Red Bluff, and that's open and free to the community. There's flyers back there if anyone is interested in grabbing one, and we'd love to have you guys join. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bridget.
The next proclamation will be National Foster Care Month, presented by Councilmember Busby.
Yeah, proclamation, National Foster Care Month. Whereas in 1988, the United States Congress designated May as National Foster Care Month to recognize the critical role that foster parents, child welfare professionals, and communities play in the lives of children and youth in foster care. And whereas National Foster Care Month is a time to honor the strength and resilience of children and youth in foster care and to recognize the caring adults, kinship caregivers, kinship caregivers, foster families, mentors, social workers, and advocates who support their journeys. And whereas children entering foster care often face significant trauma, mental health challenges and disruptions in their lives, and it is vital to promote the prevention efforts that strengthen families and reduce adverse childhood experiences. And whereas when children must be removed from their homes, placement with relatives or other family caregivers, known as kinship care, provides stability and connection and is linked to more positive outcomes for children. And whereas foster families are essential to the child welfare system and must be supported with the intentional recruitment, culturally responsive training, and resources that enable them to meet the complex needs of children in their care. And whereas the voices and lived experiences of current and former foster youth are essential in shaping systems that respond to their needs with dignity, compassion, and respect, and must be included in policy, planning, and service delivery. And whereas National Foster Care Month is a time to raise awareness of the urgent need for more safe and nurturing homes, including both kinship and foster care providers, to ensure every child has the opportunity to grow up in a stable, loving environment. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Matt Busby, City Councilman of City of Willow's, and behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Foster Care Month in the City of Willow's and encourages all citizens to recognize the critical importance of supporting children in foster care, uplifting youth voice, and ensuring every child has a family to count on. And witness herof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 22nd day of April in 2025.
One more time.
Few words.
Of course.
Thank you. Appreciate having us here. Can I move this up a little bit?
Absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Amber Arnold and a program manager, too, for the Health and Human Service Agency Child Welfare. Thank you, Mayor Hudson and council members, for recognizing May as National Foster Care Month. In Glen County, we currently have 58 children and youth in foster care. While we're fortunate to have a dedicated group of foster and kinship caregivers, the need for more homes, especially for teenagers, is urgent. Older youth are the most difficult to place and often experience more moves and longer stays in care because there aren't simply enough homes willing or equipped to take them in. Right now, we have just 29 active resource homes or foster homes in the entire county. 14 of those are relative homes and 15 are community foster homes. We also have four respite care homes, although that leaves us with only nine open beds available for new placements. This lack of available homes often forces children to be placed far from their communities, siblings, schools, and support systems. And in fact, nearly 30% of our foster youth are not placed with all their siblings. That's why this month is so important, not just to raise awareness, but to inspire action. We're asking for the community's help to consider becoming a foster parent to support those who do and to spread the word about the need right here in our own backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lisa Perman. I'm a community outreach advocate for Child Welfare. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we're doing to show our appreciation to the care providers in our county. May 7th is our recognition of child resource approval families. We know it's tough for them, and it is an urgent need. They need support, and we need respite homes and foster care homes. So part of our training that we're going to provide is some self-care because they get burnt out, and we see that, and we're there to support them. But we can only do so much between eight and five, and we do have a hotline number and we can provide support. But sometimes our care providers just need a little break. So we're doing a lot of self-care for them. We plan on taking them coffee just to show our appreciation. We're gonna have a barbecue for them in recognition to honor them. We plan on doing a work cloud and presenting that to them with all the wonderful qualities that they have. And then we also have Deborah Dobbs, who was an RFA. She's retiring, so I'm taking her place. So I'm new at in the department, so I don't have a lot of knowledge so far about that, but I have been in child welfare probably 20-plus years. So this is one role that I haven't had the opportunity to do, so you may see me in and about in the community trying to recruit for caregivers and for respite homes. Does anybody?
Thank you for your service.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Amber and Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Mayor? The GCSO is... Someone representing GCSOs on their way, so I was wondering if we could move Police Week proclamation to the end?
We can do that. Sorry, Councilmember Hanson, you are put on hold for a second. So the National Police Week one will be moved to down below the... After the Light of the Night. They had a different event also going on today. So, let's see. And next, we will have National Small Business Week, presented by Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation of the City of Willow's National Small Business Week. Whereas small businesses serve the cornerstone of our local economy, contributing significantly to job creation, innovation, and the overall vitality of the community. And whereas the entrepreneurial spirit, resilience, and dedication demonstrated by small business owners and their employees are vital to the continued prosperity and well-being of our region. And whereas the Willow's Chamber of Commerce plays a pivotal role in supporting, promoting, and advocating for the success of our local businesses, helping to create a thriving environment where entrepreneurs can grow and succeed. And whereas National Small Business Week is a time to recognize the invaluable contributions of small businesses and to celebrate their role in shaping the character and strength of our community. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Richard Thomas, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the entire Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week and call upon all residents, community organizations, and local leaders to join in recognizing and supporting the small businesses that are vital to our economy and essentially to our unique identity for our community. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand this 22nd day of April 2025. And if I may call up Jamie Mellon, who has served the Willow's Chamber of Commerce for more years than we can count.
Thank you for your continued long duration.
I don't have a script because, you know, I don't need... Anyway. I appreciate this very much. We did... Weekend ago, the Saturday before Easter week, we did have a craft fair in Ace Hardware Mall, and we had 12 vendors inside, four outside. It was a beautiful day, so it was good, and all the vendors were happy. Also, the businesses in town are open because they knew it, and I know that all of them were extremely busy all day. The idea to have it before Easter was to have people shop in Willow's during Easter week, and it worked. It really did work, and I know that. This Friday, Treasure Chest, which is a new business, quote-unquote, she's open for a year as of this week, and she's celebrating her one-year anniversary on Saturday. And the chamber will be doing a ribbon cutting at 11:00 in her honor. She's very happy about that. So we look around, and we're hoping that new businesses will pop up. We see them. We see a couple on Wood Street happening and one downtown, so we try to get in touch with them as early as we can to let them know, is there anything we can do to help them? And we do. And one of the other things, and I gave you our business directories that we do every year, and something that was brought up at another meeting I had last week was, gee, the asterix in there, there's not many chamber members. I said, yeah, it's unfortunate, but we are increasing that. But it is a business directory, and we just don't put it out for chamber members. We put it out for all the businesses in the Willow's area. So it's one of those things, and it's very useful. We had 700 of them made, and we've already passed them out, and that was as of January. So we'll be making some more, and we update it continually, continually. It's an updated... So. Anything else?
Thank you for your ears.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Next, we have City Willow's proclamation, Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters. Whereas across our nation, firefighters selflessly dedicate themselves to protecting life, property, and the environment, often placing themselves in harm's way to keep others safe. And whereas each year, the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation sponsors Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters, an annual tribute that honors those brave individuals who have died in the line of duty. And whereas iconic buildings, landmarks, homes, and fire departments across the United States are illuminated in red during the week leading up to National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend, serving as a beacon of remembrance and gratitude. And whereas this national tribute is a powerful reminder of the courage and sacrifice made by firefighters and a symbol of support for the families, friends, and fellow firefighters laid behind. And whereas the City of Willow's is proud to stand in solidarity with communities across the country and recognizing the extraordinary service and sacrifice of our fallen heroes. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the week of April 27th through May 4th, 2025, as Light the Night for Fallen Firefighters Week and encourage all residences, businesses, and organizations to participate in this tribute by lighting buildings and homes in red to honor those who gave their lives and service to others. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 22nd day of April 2025.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Next, we have Councilmember Hanson presenting National Police Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a thank you for the privilege of allowing me to read this. It means a lot. City Willow's proclamation, National Police Week. Whereas of all the promises America offers, none is more precious or more essential than the right to live free from fear and harm. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger in order to safeguard our communities, uphold the rule of law, and preserve our freedoms. And whereas the week of May 11th through May 17, 2025, is recognized throughout the nation as National Police Week, honoring the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the United States. And whereas as part of this important observance, the City of Willow's will honor May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officer Memorial Day, paying solemn tribute to those noble officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas in 2024, 147 peace officers across the nation made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, including five courageous officers from the state of California, whose dedication, bravery, and unwavering commitment to protecting our communities will never be forgotten. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Gary Hanson, Councilmember of the City of Willow's, on behalf of Mayor Evan Hudson of the City of Willow's, on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through May 17, 2025, as National Police Week and further recognize May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in the City of Willow's. I direct that all American flags in the City of Willow's be displayed at half-staff on May 15th in honor of those peace officers who have given their lives in the line of duty, and I encourage all citizens to join in remembering and honoring their sacrifice and to express our ongoing appreciation to the men and women who continue to serve with courage, integrity, and dedication. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 22nd day of April 2025, signed by Evan Hudson, Mayor. And I'd like to present this to my friend and one fine law enforcement officer, Sergeant John Owens, the Glen County Sheriff's Office. John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean.
I worked for another agency prior to Glen, and I would say personally that the community that we work here is... It's different. You have so much support, and there's so much love for us. And, you know, I just hope that we do the same for the rest of the year. We feel very... I feel personally very thankful to work here and to support the community.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'd like to take a moment to identify that all five of these proclamations wouldn't be possible without the people that work in these fields. So with that, I'd like to give you guys a round of applause. It's not easy sometimes doing what you do, but we really appreciate it. So thank you. All right, next up is Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. Now, if you, yeah, if you want to, guys want to sneak out, you're more than welcome to sneak out. Now give a quick moment before I start reading about public comment and things like that, so. So Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first requests that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and the council members and not to staff and/or the audience. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. All right. With that, is there any public comment? Come up and please say your name into the mic. It's not required, but we request it.
Hi. Good evening. Needers. My name is Nanjo. Today, I wonder... Because I know English, so I wonder, they'll ask me, talk to this. I got a...
Can she speak to the microphone? We... I'm having a hard time hearing her.
And 401. And so I buy the probably eight years, many years, I kind of win. So then not much people like the shop. So people like the house. People always ask me, can I go to the lift? I said, no, this is a commercial building. So I want the needers and everybody, help me solve this problem. I really, really thank you very much. And also, I want to tell people this because I know much English, so she know any information. Thank you. He wasn't here.
So we bought a house in South Shasta Street, known as... Manhattan. We have several projects. So they have this house on the corner. And we worked with Joe, and they've said that it doesn't conform to the municipal code. We've been working, planning here, started responding to that in December, November 13th, 2025, in response to our question, non-conformity to the municipal code. February 10th, we put in an application to the 2025 email. So we've been searching for the item on the agenda, and the last email, we get a response, which is here. We sent that to them, and they're on the agenda for the sixth. We quite want to know, don't want homeless people or who do you call the squatters? Almost boss, the trash. So I've got a footwork with neighbors, we have a funny southern neighbor, buck them off. He said, we want a house, we want somebody that's planning it, here are the neighbors on it. And so we've asked for various. And so what we understand is that there's a problem and that we're requesting a Willow's municipal code in Section 18110090, which is the planning permission on six, says that there's an exemption for existing residential structures that were removed on the property. If they become commercial, they can revert back to residential. But then Section 10 says it allows the vacant property of a commercial building to be used for similar planning. This office will conform to either of those. However, it looks like a house, smells like a house, tastes like a house, and yet... And yeah, because it was a property, a housing commercial property, never was a house. And they can't give up the use. So I talked to the neighbor across the street over there in the white house. She had this problem. She wanted to have a beauty parlor, a house, and they gave her beer. And the next door, there's a guy with red colors. Two pieces that sound together. But he's compliant with it. For her situation, this is an email that's at us. We tried to conform to it, and I understand that it's out of the municipal code. So we're only used to be aware of this because there's a lot of expenses to leave that's on face and try to get the I have a letter from her realtor. She's listed it and in writing will have problems with filling with what's put. There's some reaching the church that you need.
Counsel, my apologies, sir. It's been brought to my attention that you have an, the individuals at the podium have an item before the planning commission, this what they're discussing. And so because, sir, you have to go through the process, you have to go through the planning commission, and depending upon how that decision is made, you may have the opportunity to appeal it to the council directly. Yeah, so I would, I would suggest that maybe you withhold your statements until you've gone through the process with the planning commission. And yeah, so I I'm sorry, what? I don't know if that's, I mean, if it's not cogent to your actual appeal, if it's just an anecdote, I have no issue with that. You have been over the three minutes that the council generally provides.
Office space, nobody rents office. But we don't want to go higher this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Your time. Thank you. All right. My phone is on silent, but for some reason that supersedes it and still goes off. Is there any other public comment for this evening? Okay, pleasure the council on the consent calendar.
Mayor, if I could, there's just, well, myself and the fire chief each have a comment on a different item. I don't think it requires pulling either item, but it's just, mine's a technical error clarification. And the fire chief wanted to give a little more explanation to lead it to the weed abatement and the fire that occurred yesterday at 143 North Yolo. So his items first, if that's okay with you, with the council for him to make a comment, and then I'll make one on my item.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel. Just an update for you. As most of you are aware by now, there was a structure fire at the condemned multifamily at 143 North Yolo. There was fire damage, smoke, and water damage throughout. So the structure is pretty much a total loss at this point. We were fortunate that there was no injuries. But the structure does now pose an even bigger hazard than it did before as being a burned out Hulk of a building. The intent is to declare it an immediate life and safety hazard and move forward with the abatement process to raise the structure and bring the structure in or the lot into compliance with municipal code to eliminate the hazard. With that is going to come a price tag. We received a quote from the city contractor of about $30,000 to bring the structure into compliance, which in my opinion, I believe is money well spent because that's also going to remove a lot of the continued litigation issues with the property and staff time trying to deal with co enforcement complaints as well as bringing the structure, making the area safe. I have about $50,000 left in the weed abatement grant to cover hazardous fuels reduction. We use hazardous fuels reduction monies for other properties like 141 North Crawford. We can run it through that. But when we do that, there's not going to be the entire amount of 2025 weed abatement season grant monies available. I'm going to try to apply for another amendment to move some money out of salaries and push it over into contract for weed abatement removal for mandated abatements. But with it being so late in the grant, and there's only, you know, nine months left until the grant is expired, I'm not 100% confident that they're going to do that because it's a bit of a lift on their end as well as mine. So I wanted to make you guys aware of that, give you guys something to chew on. And answer any question you guys might have.
And if I could just add to that quickly, that the point being that if we continue through the weed abatement season, we use the 30,000 from the current grant to demolish and raise this building, and then we run out of money for the remainder of our weed abatement season. And if the fire chief is unable to get the grant amended, we would be coming back to the council and either asking for a decision about either only using what's in the grant and then not doing any more weed abatement. Or if, you know, the season requires and demands more funding, we would be coming back and requesting additional funding. And I wanted to give you the heads up, and I wanted the council to have an opportunity to think about it because I think we should still go through with the demolition and use this grant money now. But there may come a time in a couple of months when we'll be back with a request, and I don't want it to come as a surprise at that time.
Thank you.
Makes sense to me.
Absolutely.
Quick, quick question, if I may. This, this property has been a subject of the city's effort to abate for, for many, 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 many months, if not years.
Ever since I've been here.
Ever since I've been here.
So we've been trying to resolve the ongoing issues for a long time, and we have money invested. We would be submitting a claim against or a lien against the property for recovery of abatement costs. Is that correct?
Yes, we will.
With it being raised, the likelihood of our being able to recover all of the cost is probably minimal?
We're not going to recover all the costs anyways. We would get, we would be lucky through the receivership process to get, you know, most of the money recovered. At this point, it's, in my opinion, it's really a money pit. There's, you know, 30 or 30,000 plus dollars worth of recorded liens on that property already.
From the city?
Yeah.
So we're looking to add another 30,000 to that.
Yeah.
And we can get reimbursed through that process.
Yeah, eventually, eventually when the property, if the property taxes and all the liens aren't paid after five years, it goes to an auction. And then usually, and I don't know if there's a note on the property or not, but usually it goes to pay back the mortgage first and then the government entities that put liens on after that.
So I think that the question's going to come back more about whether you want to finish out the rest of the season. Because I, I mean, it would be, I think we'd all be hard pressed to make the argument that it's not a good idea to dump.
No, we have to get rid of that bill.
The weed abatement contract that is on the consent is got a not to exceed $40,000 in it. And that number was put in there because that was the plan of how much money I was going to have through the weed abatement grant. But now we're going to use a lot of that weed abatement grant money on 143. And so we want to
So can we pull the item and increase that number tonight?
Well, this contract doesn't go into effect until July 1st.
I would, I would recommend that we go ahead and use the grant money for 143 so we can demolish it as quickly as possible. And when we see how the season pans out, because you never know exactly how much you're going to spend, we come back and ask for additional funds.
So my question is, do we need to pull the item to make that adjustment, or can you already do it with the way it's written?
I think we are fine because it's an emergency action.
Okay.
And is it not the weed abatement, those who don't abate theirs, we get reimbursed through property tax eventually?
Yes.
Yes.
So we would be out, up, but we get recovery on the backside? I would recommend we use the money to get rid of that burned out structure and solve that problem once and forever. It's been 10 years in our sites for the city to get to fix.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, no, I absolutely agree. As, as Vice Mayor Thomas pointed out, we've been dealing with this major code enforcement problem headache, terrible property for years. It's, it's ridiculous. I won't go into, obviously, keep my comments limited to avoid any confidential discussion issues. But yeah, we need to, absolutely, chief. This building needs to be removed once and for all. But we also have obviously a major weed abatement issue that is, is also extremely important. So I look, I look forward to the discussion. Very much so. So both of these matters need to be taken care of. So however we get there. But yeah, that's all I have to say on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief.
Awesome. So I think we're settled on that one. Marty, what was?
Yes, really quickly, my item was item number 6F, the updated mechanic job classification. I just wanted, it's a technical issue, just page two of the actual mechanics job classification, the fifth bullet down. Believe that that was, and, and thank you, Councilmember Hanson, for pointing this out, but that is clearly a copy and paste by accident from an email that I think the fire chief maybe gave me. So this is the problem when you're the doer and also the reviewer. So my oversight, that bullet number five should just simply be removed. So if you move forward with approving the classification, I would just say with taking that out.
You don't want the pretty niche skill in there?
No, I really don't.
Councilmembers, anything on the agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, was the chief going to present anything in the, on the weed abatement issue? Did you have any comments, Nate, reference to weed abatement? So, okay, I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, I just had a question in reference item 60. You don't need to pull it. Just have a question, if that's fine, Chief. Yeah, Chief, thank you as always for the weed abatement work. That's not why you signed up the fire service, but you know, it's, it's a definite preventative measure. So the extensive property list is extensive. It's wet year and weeds grow. We know that. What's the number on this list off the top of your head, Chief?
I want to, if I remember correctly, it was like 640.
Okay. Is this the highest ever?
I don't believe so. I think two years ago was the highest. But I've also, since we've done the, since we've done the assessment until today, there's usually about a week lag time, and a lot of these properties are already taken care of.
Oh, it'll be whittled down. Absolutely. It always is. So that's, that, so that's all ahead, Mr. Mayor. Now, thank you, chief, for all your work in the weed abatement. It's important. Thank you. All ahead, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? I have a couple on item 6F and how their answer might lead us to pulling it. Where did the step nine level come from, the annual salary? Where was that calculated from?
I did an informal salary survey and just looked around in the area and it's on the lower end of the market, a little bit lower end. And took the top step. We've been doing nine steps since 2022. And I calculated it based on Andy's advice on how to calculate it. There is a little bit of a science to it. So, so it was really just, and that, and you start with the top step and you go backwards, but I just looked informally at what kind of is going on in the region. And like I said, I'd say it's not right in the middle. It's like just below the middle.
Okay. So that was kind of my concern was if it's gonna, I mean, likelihood is at a level that will draw somebody in quickly, or do you feel like it's? I mean, I feel like it's a need, it's a, it's a need for the city, not necessarily a want.
Yes, I agree.
So I want to make sure like it's, you know, when we're doing this, maybe that's the top step. We're not guaranteeing that the top step. From what I've talked to a couple of different mechanics, that's kind of their middle range of where they're currently working at for them to leave their current.
The top step?
Our top step is about their middle ground, for them to leave their current jobs when they are working on that sort of machinery. So I'm kind of curious as to.
Well, I was, somebody just gave me one, was it you, Nate, a mechanic in the area? So that was top step was around 64K.
Okay.
I think my thought process on it, you know, we can change, if the council wants to do something differently, certainly we can, was to try to fly it and see what happens. And if we don't get qualified candidates, because it's, it is going to be challenging because we, we want somebody that knows a little something about fire trucks. So, and then I would come back to the council if that doesn't work and recommend that we increase the salary range. That's what I was thinking of doing, but if you want to.
That's why I'd rather ask the question instead of pulling the sun phone. So, perfect. With that, pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we approve the consent calendar as presented with the amendment made to item 6F in reference to the updated mechanic job classification.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, report is zero. All right. Next up, we have discussion and action calendar items. All items in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes as each agenda item is reviewed and discussed by council. Item 7A, expending park impact fees. This will be passed off to you, Mr. Benton Court.
Good afternoon, counsel. So this is a revisiting and reevaluating of options for funding eligible park and recreation projects with the city's development impact fees. This review ensures that projects align with the community needs and available resources.
I think he's crying.
In 2008, the city council adopted a development impact mitigation fee nexus study, which established a parks and facilities development impact fee to fund projects, which can be seen on this slide. On this slide, you'll see the various lists of projects and their associated amounts. In August of 2024, staff brought forward projects for an automated softball field lighting system, and which was approved and has been ordered. And we also discussed the option of a BMX pump track, which was to be brought back for further discussion. Staff is now seeking direction on additional priority projects to maximize the remaining available funds. And as noted, these costs are from 2008, so they are not close to accurate.
Maybe also for the benefit of the public and maybe also the council, especially our newer council members. Explain a little bit about how the nexus study works and why we can't just spend the money on anything and all things parks.
Yep. So a nexus study takes into consideration the community input and sets certain projects for that funding amount. These fees are raised when new development comes to town. They pay formula valuation to raise funds to provide these kinds of projects. Excuse me. So the projects listed in this 2008 study, even if we were to have done a new nexus study this year, all the fees that have been gathered from this 2008 study need to be spent on these 2008 projects. So we're pretty locked in with the current funding that we have to spend it on one of these eligible projects at this point. Next slide. So staff's bringing forward three projects to look at, solar lights along pathways or playground structures or recreation equipment, new passive parks, possibly at French and Butte Street, and then a revisiting of the BMX pump track at the parking lot of Sycamore. So the benefits of these projects, I'm going to start with the solar light project. So the Sycamore Park and Pool Grant funded project came in over budgeted our 50% plan submittal. We are trying to achieve as much cost savings as possible without eliminating priority portions of the project. If we were able to use park development impact fee funds, one of the eligible activities was solar lighting, which is also part of our park grant, and the park lighting at the pickleball court is also an eligible expense. So currently, if we use those fees to pay a portion for the grant, we'd be able to offset that and kind of balance out our budget a little better. A new passive park. So I'll give a definition of a passive park because I didn't quite know what it was when I looked at it either. A passive park is a low-impact, low-maintenance green space designed primarily for relaxation and casual recreation, offering amenities like benches, walking paths, shade trees, and native landscaping. So usually a smaller park with limited amenities of more of a hangout spot than a full recreation kind of park. And another benefit of that would be the location of it. The city currently lacks a public park north of Highway 162, a passive park. A passive park in that area would help address geographic disparities. And passive parks are a cost-effective investment requiring few resources and limited maintenance. And then the benefits of a pump track, and we've kind of went over these in the past. But this involves a fun accessible way for youth to stay active, engaged outdoors, promotes physical fitness. And unlike structured sports, there's no fee for it. So the the youth are able to use this at no cost. And there's some pictures of a passive park. Okay, some disadvantages, concerns with the pump track. So one of the, one of the disadvantages would be reduced off-street parking for our Sycamore Park. Um, we were planning on using half. We discussed last time in August that a potential good spot for it would be to use the parking lot, take up half of that parking area and install the pump track there. So we reduce the number of off-street parking locations. Um, there's additional safety concerns as the pump track would be near vehicle parking and park cars entering and leaving the area. Uh, maintenance and upkeep. This is, this can be limited on maintenance and upkeep upkeep if we bought a kind of a pre fabricated track that they make where you kind of link different things together. But then you're at a very, very high cost. Um, a dirt track like the one in Orland is pretty easy and cheap to put together. Um, you're moving dirt around, so it's the cost of the dirt. But then you've got ongoing maintenance costs, weed control, vegetation, all that good stuff, along with keeping the 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 pumps and jumps up to par, rocks in the dirt, those kinds of things. Um, and it's overlapping with existing amenities. As I mentioned before, some of the benefits that the pump track provides, which is a free, you know, free sport basically for anybody to partake in. We have what Orland doesn't, and that's a skate park, which pretty much provides the same benefits as that pump track would, just on a different mode mode of transportation, basically. And then we've got uncertain usage. Um, just in talking to the city of Orland and, you know, kind of user observations, that pump track isn't heavily utilized. Um, and that could be for for many different reasons. But we just want to make sure that we're spending this money in a way that provides the most benefit to our community.
Next slide.
Okay, so here's the funding that we have currently. This is a approximate what we'll end up with at the beginning of twenty five, twenty six, which is three forty three. We'll be spending thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars on the automated field lighting system and installation of it, leaving about a three hundred and five thousand dollars remaining balance to spend on these projects. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, as far as the clean cow grant goes, we'll be getting our seventy five percent submittals coming here in the near future. Um, what I'd, what I'd like to do is look at our shortfalls or what we are going to need to reduce, if any, and see if we can offset those shortfalls with these development impact fee funds. And that doesn't mean we use all the funds to offset those costs. But we will need to see where we're at to determine the level of funding from those development impact fees. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Pleasure to the council. Any questions for Joe?
I could make a real quick comment. I just want to mention that the impact fees that we have for parks, but all of our impact fees, um, we've had for some time. And it is state requirement for us to expend those funds on whatever's in your nexus study. And as you can see, the nexus study is fairly old now, two thousand eight. Um, and so I have been pushing with the staff to really work to expend these monies because we really should. And then, as the council knows from our one-on-one meetings, I'm hoping that next year, when we have a little more money, we could update the nexus study with, you know, current goals and priorities of the community and, you know, expand the money that's in the account now on these things or something related um, that fits the the current nexus study. So I just wanted to mention, the reason you're hearing this and there's this push is we should be spending these monies.
I guess my question would be, um, what would the bandwidth be to have our, you know, these two thousand eight prices updated? So we know that we're spending our three hundred and five thousand on something that's casting the widest net.
Basically, I think the best way to do that would prioritize what you think the community would want. And then we'd go reach out and update quotes on on those kinds of things, even with the pump track. I mean, you can range from moving dirt for thirty thousand dollars to spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a pre-made track. So um, there, there is a level to all of those things. Again, with the passive park, what are we doing, you know, um, to cut costs upfront versus long-term maintenance costs and those kinds of things? So uh, to answer that, Councilmember Busby, it'd be if we had a direction on, hey, we want to look at what these prices are, then we would move forward on on engaging a consultant or being able to provide, in the case of the automated light system, um, reaching out to Musco and gaining quotes for that equipment.
These items also, I would say typically would be in the wheelhouse of the city engineer. And so if we were going to take this to the city engineer and say, could you update the these numbers so that we could bring them back to council? Um, or do a better approximation than what we have today? It's the cost of the city engineer's time. And so typically, I don't do that or recommend that unless we actually have a rec. Like, I start with what we want to do and then start paying for his time, not kind of looking at all of our options. Because all that costs money, right? He's not a staff person. That's probably, if we were going to do it the way you just suggested, that's what I'd go back to the city engineer and say, John, I need to update all of these numbers. And he would work with Joe on that. And it would be mainly the cost of John's time or his staff.
Okay, I guess I'm um, uh, unsure as to like what the next step is for here. But I'm for the amount of money that we have, we have an opportunity here. And the the pump track and the passive parks, uh, I don't, I, my personal opinion is that we could do other cooler things with it. Um, softball, soccer fields, but I'd probably ask staff for, hey, what's our rec? You know, what are our recreational programs? What's the participation like? Where are we wanting that kind of stuff?
I guess my question back to you would be, um, that recommendation list, the first one was about subsidizing basically the current Sycamore Park project that's over four million dollars and looking at that. And that's kind of the first recommendation if we want to make that project whole. So maybe my question to you would be, if we can use that money to make that project more whole, would that be a first choice of the council? And then if it's not, we could drill down into all these other options and things that people, because that's an ongoing project and we can see we're running out of money for it, some some aspects of it. So I think I'd like to do that.
What do you mean we're make us whole on that project? I thought the whole idea of that project was that it was going to pay for itself, that there wasn't going to be any money coming out from us. But now you're saying there might be?
No, what what more likely will be cuts from the original design and the project. So we were like looking for, maybe we could use this money for the solar lighting that's already in the project and use that because the project has come in, engineering has come in over budget of all the grant money that we've put together, the two hundred thousand from the county, the four million dollar grant, and the other one hundred and seventy nine thousand, another grant that we have from twenty nineteen. The project has now exceeded that. We've taken some things out and made some, we've done some cost engineering and, um, sorry, value engineering and cut back on some other costs and expenses. Um, and we can keep doing that. That is an option to get to a balanced budget. But if we can use some of these impact fees to help keep as much of that project whole as possible as originally designed, that would be, I think, our recommendation.
I think I'm just confused because I didn't, I have, this is the first I've heard that that project is slowly being whittled away at and not being done to the capacity that it was initially. You know, the grant was gotten for. I didn't realize that things are being removed off of that. I mean, I I just maybe I missed it.
Yeah, so the the um, the pool came in over budget. I think they had a seven hundred thousand dollar estimate for it. And we're now at a one point two million dollar price tag for that. So what we've done at our fifty percent engineering, when we saw the the price tag was over budget, was go back, do the value engineering, see, see what we can get down to at our seventy five percent submittals. Uh, the solar was approximately five hundred thousand dollars. So that was one where we said, hey, if something's got to go, it's going to be the solar panel shade structure and then a solar panel roof over the bathroom, pieces of it. So we're still going to have a roof over the bathroom. But the engineer's suggestion was, you're going to build this giant structure, which is, which makes sense if you're building a giant parking lot structure. But basically, you're going to spend so much money in building this shade structure for the limited amount of panels that you're going to get to reduce power out of this. It's never going to make itself up in, in, you know, energy savings in the long run.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so we reduced, so the solar came out and now we're at a point where we've taken, um, you know, reduced down. We we thought some of the estimates that were provided by Will Down were a little too cushy. Um, so John had his staff actually go back and look at some of these amounts and value engineer them like, okay, what can we make more realistic number? Some of it was what it was. There was nothing to do. So now what we'll see at this next seventy five percent submittal will be, you know, a reduction of the five hundred thousand dollars from the solar panels. And then do we need to make any other adjustments at that point? And we don't know exactly what that is yet. We we will know here, hopefully in the next month, on what the overall price tag is. But then we have to start looking at things. Do we have a pool like development impact fees, which would cover, you know, because in the two thousand eight study, the lights are identified in that fee, that we could say, hey, we're a hundred and fifty K short. We do we want to go to the council and look for a hundred and fifty K worth of development impact fee funds?
And that all makes complete sense to me. I just didn't, I I didn't realize that there was items possibly being removed from that project.
It's all pretty, we ran it. So the pool issue too was number one, it was under, uh, there was a lot more things that needed to be done from our initial report a long time ago, and then that's going to cost more. And then there's new standards that we have to to do that increase that price.
And the cost to do it all.
Yeah, and this is all pretty, I mean, our fifty percent submittal was only a couple of weeks ago.
Things like the solar panels were, you know, staff ideas, like nice project ideas. Hey, let's do this. Let's do that. You know, some of it wasn't what was originally coming from the public. Originally from the public was, you know, get the pool open. So we're doing all the things related to the pool and none of that's being touched or or cut. But some of these other ideas like solar panels, that was just a nice staff idea. So it's not really cutting the core project. I just want to make sure you're not walking away with thinking there's cuts to the core primary project that was.
No, I just, I look at the board that's, you know, posted up and I'm like, that's what I'm expecting. But that's expectation, right, unknowingly. So no, um, sorry, any other questions from the council?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor. You know, I I tend to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Busby. Uh, I use a quote from, uh, one of the greatest broadcasters in American sports history, Keith Jackson. Hey, remember Keith Jackson? Called college football games for decades, outstanding broadcaster. Whoa, Anelli, you know, I I like the approved softball fields automated lighting system. We've already approved that project. The softball fields are heavily heavily utilized. That's a great project. And it's in, it's in the works. I do like using, uh, the thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars toward that. Uh, we have two fantastic parks here, as we know, in Sycamore and Jensen Park, well-used parks. I'd I'd rather see this three hundred and five thousand dollars put to use in 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 those parks for something, you know, that's going to be utilized rather than, you know, I I agree with the thoughts on the BMX track. Really, you know, is there, is there a big drive for us to have a BMX track out there? I I haven't heard heard of anything along those lines. We've talked internally for years about our lots at at Butte and French, possibly a future park, which sure, a passive park. Sure, but but right now, I don't, I don't think now's the time. I think we need to just, uh, sit back and think about this a little bit and utilize those funds for our two major parks, to make those parks even better before we jump. I just don't want to see us spending money just to spend money because we have the impact fees. I don't think that's wise. And I'm not alluding to the staff is recommending that, doing doing that. But those are just my, those are my thoughts on it. Let's focus on make on improving Sycamore and Jensen with this three hundred thousand plus and put it to good use and not just kind of have a wish list out there at this time. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
You have any questions, Par?
Well, I have a comment. Um, I'm I'm with you on the on the lighting around Sycamore Park and the walkways. I think that's that's very prudent. Um, we do not have a park north of one sixty two on the north side. I like the concept of putting a park up there. I don't know if where our three lots is the most desirable location for that. Um, I assume a passive park would include a dog park.
Could, yeah.
Um, and I think I could consider front portion of that or the back portion of that lot as a dog park with some trees, some picnic tables, and maybe a simple playground structure. Um, so the folks on the north side of of Willows would have a place to go to. The folks over in northeast Willows, which is not the city, but they could come over and enjoy the two. Uh, it, I think we need to consider, the only place they have that's green space north of Wood Street is school district property. And I think we need to consider how we could put a park somewhere up there for for the residents up there. Like I said, I'm not sure it's the best location, but I think a dog park. And I believe also, if we had the ability to put out that there's a dog park, those people going up and down I five, um, if it were on some Google search. And I'm not a social media kind of guy, but might bring some folks in that we have a place for them to park and they could pick up a sandwich and and then let their dog run a little bit before they continue on the road. So I kind of like the concept of a passive park with a dog park. Um, some picnic table shade and a simple playground structure on the north side on those lots. That would be my thought.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any public comment?
Okay, want to make sure I asked for that. Um, yeah, no, I personally, I like the idea of applying it to our Sycamore Park project, right? We, I, the way I look at it is we set out an expectation. I want to try and do our best to try and meet that expectation and make sure that we're holding true to our word because that's, you know, what we kind of promise the people. But, I mean, I think it's too hard to select any two items out of here and say, hey, let's knock these two out when we already have a project going that we can be like, let's finalize this and let's get it going strong. So that's where I'm at, but it is going to be up to the pleasure of the council. And I will leave it with you guys.
Well, I would add that I'm not in favor of a BMX pump track. I don't see, um, that many kids running around on a BMX bicycle anymore. Uh, I see them on scooters and other bikes. And now I see them on the skateboard where the skate park. And I think if they want to jump, they go to the skate park. I, I, I think, um, I would rate, worry about the liability of somebody crashing on the BMS pump track and breaking their arm and and thinking that the city did something wrong and creating liability for us. So lighting, if we can't light the tennis courts with the grant, maybe that's the way to do that. But I would pursue lighting and and the park in north, on the north side of town.
What we can do is, is when we have our numbers, you know, come back in a, uh, probably two months before we will have numbers and be able to do a council item on it. But in two months or so, we can come back with the amount of, hey, this is what we need to supplement the grant and then have that conversation again about the remaining funds that are left. Because that might be a a major driver of what we can accomplish with the remaining funds. We might not, fingers crossed, we won't need to pull any development impact fee funds to supplement that. Um, as Marty mentioned, our priorities are going to be the pool, the pathways and the lighting. Um, there's other areas that we can try to try to cut out, whether, yeah, that's sidewalk or other smaller things. But we're always going to focus on those. So I'd like to come back again and have a have a better number of what we would need to pull out of that fund and then lead kind of the discussion based off your comments of not a BMX pump track, but looking at the park or other amenities at our current parks that we can improve upon.
Yeah, I think, I I think, um, identifying where we have momentum, right? Where the dollar goes the longest.
Yeah, right, yep.
Quick question on this too. How often do we do a nexus study on this? If I missed that already?
Two thousand eight.
No, how, but can we?
It's done about every five to seven years, I would say.
Five years is not.
It's normal.
Not almost twenty?
Correct. It's not normal.
They do, they do tend to slip as they do cost a little bit of money.
They're not.
Yeah, especially when we're in the state that we were at the last couple of years, it's understandable. Um, I think it is something that would be great to be looked at, especially since some of these items on the list are, I would like to say outdated.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, some of them have been checked off or, you know, we have other agreements that work really well for the city and local areas. So, um.
The thing is, even if we update the nexus study, we don't get to use the old money on the new nexus study. We're bound by this, another reason to just expend it, frankly.
Yeah, no, I agree. Uh, pleasure to the council, because this is an action item.
There's no action. It's just, we wanted your input. I think we got it, so we're good.
Perfect. All right, and we will move on to next. Yeah, thank you for the information, Joe. And next up is item seven B, fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, proposed new budget acquisitions and projects. This will be presented by city manager Marty Brown.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, so next slide. This will be, um, you know, kind of high level overview of how things are looking. Um, it's a, it's, uh, for those on the Finance and Measure I Oversight Committee, it will feel like a deja vu from last week's finance meeting, but, um, and, but that worked so well that I'm doing it again. Um, so we'll be updating on the budget and projections, Measure I, um, some assumptions and considerations. Um, the recommended budget items from staff, of which I've had one-on-one meetings with all of you about. Some requests that I've received from council over the last few weeks. And the feedback that we received from the Finance and Measure I Town Hall Meeting. And at that point, I'll also be asking, um, the two committee members on the council to maybe share any of their input. Projected financial forecasting and any questions or discussion. Next slide. So we are anticipating, um, based on the recent, uh, finance forecast model that, um, Andy Heath, our finance consultant, updated that we will start out July 1, 2025 with just over $1 million in the general fund reserve that is based on and includes the Measure I funds for the first quarter collection of the 1.5% sales tax, um, estimated at $475,000 for that first quarter, April to June 30th of this year. Um, then the total general fund revenue for this next fiscal year 25-26 is anticipated to be 7.3 million and change. And that includes a, a complete 12 months of Measure I revenue, uh, estimated at 1.9 million currently. Total general fund expenditures based on what I'm presenting this evening, um, is projected now at about 7.587 million. Um, projected deficit is 214,000. And that means that the ending fund balance, June 30th of '26, is anticipated to be $790,000. I just want to, um, state that my numbers are a little different than yours in the packet, um, because I realized I had overlooked something else today, a couple hours ago, which was a request for an additional $4,000 in the budget, uh, for books for the library. Um, so I have added that. So I apologize, your numbers will be off by about $4,000. But I mean, I think it's, it's de minimis. So, next slide. Um, so some of the budget assumptions that are not included obviously are the, um, sale of city-owned properties, which was approved at council about a month ago, the potential increase in, um, transit occupancy tax based on the results of the audit. Um, those letters have gone out to the motels in the city and we are waiting for their response. So that, um, is not included either. Neither is any revenue coming in from the potential cannabis dispensaries, which, um, are moving forward with the application process and will be presented to the Cannabis Application Review Committee of the council next week and continue moving through that process. Um, those licenses are anticipated to come to the full council, um, assuming there's a recommendation in July. So any revenue from that is also not included in these projections. Budget and assumptions and, um, considerations that are increases that are just the cost of doing business include the sheriff's contract will go up an additional $335,000 this year. Union contracts, they've been expired for, uh, almost a year. We've been in labor negotiations for the past six months. Um, those are anticipated to increase by approximately $100,000. Um, healthcare insurance is going to go up 23,000. Unfunded pension liability jumped again this year, um, going up about 80,000. Um, the city's liability and insurance, um, 20,000. That's in part based on, um, the appraisals that we just had, which showed that we were severely under appraising, uh, our properties at a, the insurance was for approximately 18 million, but the, um, value was, um, 36 million, I think, or 34 million, somewhere in there that came back from the appraisal. So I'm currently going out to get bids for new insurance for all of the city assets at this time. So that's anticipated to increase. Um, as you got a late amendment last night, another amendment, I apologize. Um, I forgot that earlier this year, we had decided to extend the time on the municipal code update and allow Harrison Associates to, uh, be involved. They had given me an estimate of $60,000, uh, to work on Title 18 zoning, which will start in the new fiscal year. Um, so that's been added. And then overall anticipated department expenses, again, just the cost of doing business for, you know, repairs and equipment and those kinds of things, anticipated to go up an additional $75,000 for a total of 693,000. Next slide. So for this, um, fiscal year, that the new budgetary items, um, are the Ford 150 Dodge truck for Public Works. Um, you know, the initial down payment for a fire engine two for 250,000. The Public Works trucks estimated at 50K. Um, replace the asphalt area and apron behind the fire station. We have an estimate of 86,000 for that. A new proposition 218 study for sewage fund rate increase, um, that should be starting by January of 2026, um, estimated at 50,000. Tyler Technologies new utility module to bring in, uh, sewage payments in-house to the city rather than, um, currently residential that are billed by the county and for commercial, they're billed by, uh, Cal Water on the Cal Water bill. Cal Water's made it clear. They don't want to be doing this much longer. So it's an opportunity for us to try to bring that in-house, which requires a new software module. And we already have Tyler, so it makes sense to just stick with Tyler. Um, full-time administrative analyst position that would be shared between community development and services in the fire department. Um, there's a recommendation to start that January 1, just to have some additional cost savings. So that would be estimated at 35,000 for this fiscal year and with all the roll-up costs, 65 to 70,000 in future years. Part-time seasonal public works employee for this summer, $6,000, um, to create a new assistant library director position and eliminate the library tech position. Um, the trade-off there is going to be roughly an additional $15,000 a year. Um, proposal for a new website. Um, in the next couple of years, we will, um, actually have to go to .gov from .org. And we also, there's new state law around ADA compliance for visually impaired. So there's going to be changes we're going to have to do anyways. We've gotten some initial estimates pretty high, but we think we might be able to either update it or create a new one for $10,000 or, or lower. Um, IT upgrades, 32,000. We have all several, about two-thirds of our computers and software licensing are expired or will expire in '25. TOT auditing and monitoring, I'm recommending that we continue to do that. I think we saw from the recent audit that it is in the city's best interest to continue to audit, um, transit occupancy tax with our motels. So that would be an additional 12,000 this first year for startup. And then years after that, it would be $7,000 a year annually. And as I mentioned, the increase in library book budget was a request for an additional $4,000 to bring the budget back up to the 10,000 that it was, um, in prior years. It's been 6,000 for the last couple of fiscal years. Next slide. Um, I have done a little bit of costing of some of these items. There has been, um, interest in new street name signs, um, a new flashing stop sign down at Road 57 and new wayfinding signs. Um, I'm going to bring back, this is a global item together. There's multiple council members that are interested in this. I think that we can use our, um, I've already confirmed with the city engineer, gas tax, RSTP monies, possibly I-5 interchange impact fees. And then we have a PG&E grant for $5,000 for the wayfinding signs already. So just going to bring back as one package, uh, before the end of the fiscal year for the council to get that going. And I don't think we'll need any general money, monies for those. Um, there's also several stop signs in the city that are missing or almost gone is the reflective adhesive. So those actually need to be replaced as well. Next slide. Um, the Finance and Measure I Committee's Town Hall Meeting was last Tuesday, a week ago. And, um, some of the feedback that we received from the audience, there's, there's, um, there were roughly about 16 people and, um, four people spoke, including Doug. And, um, we had, uh, one request for a full-time children's librarian position. And although I think that one person that spoke was speaking on behalf of several people because there were quite a few people sitting together and I think they were from friends of the library and the library board. Um, also, um, several comments about, uh, generally about investing in the future, visionary leadership, economic engine is along I-5, look for revenue generating assets, invest in the community like the city pool. Those mostly all came from David Baden, though, who was also in attendance. Um, I don't know if the committee members want to add anything to the comments about what happened at last Tuesday's committee meeting? Vice Mayor Thomas or Councilmember Busby?
Well, I can add, um, probably more comment in color to the fact that the information they received after the meeting and, um, folks that I ran into around town after, after we had this meeting. And many, or one particular gentleman said to me, says, I was there, but I didn't speak. Because I see where the council is headed and I like what's, what they see, what I see. Uh, you're, you're, you're upfront with your expenses. You're upfront with the finances. Um, it seems like the council's leading in the right direction. So I found that very encouraging from, from, uh, the feedback that I got. Mr. Bond's comment about leadership, yes, we need to figure out how we can, um, expand on our economic engine. We need to get the wayfinding signs out on I-5. We need to improve the road, the signs coming into town to get them on down to downtown and around town. I met with a gentleman that wants to run this morning, that wants to run for, uh, Gallagher's seat as he's termed out. And we were sitting downtown and he says, this is a beautiful downtown. You need to capitalize. And one of the things is we need foot traffic downtown. So we need to focus on the foot traffic to get the economic engine going. But in asking for the audience members to put forth what they'd like to see, we didn't get a lot of input, but we had some interest. So, uh, I would encourage the council to ask those questions when they're out and about and they see the constituents. What do you see the need is for the city of Willows and its future? What are the positive things we can do today that will bring forth positive impact tomorrow and the next day and five years from now?
The only thing I'd like to add, um, one bit about this, which I know is on, on the, the staff, you know, staff's, uh, you know, plan and everything like that, but something from a presentation standpoint is, uh, part of this whole Measure I deal is, um, getting our cash reserves and our general fund reserves back to 30% of the total budget, annual budget. And so not to lose sight of, um, we're going to be operating in a budget deficit, structural deficit for next year. Um, over the next couple of years, we're going to bail ourselves out of it, but not to forget that we got to put a little money away for a rainy day.
Which in this particular budget, we have about 300,000. Is that correct? Going back to our reserves at the end of the year?
Um, well, let's go to the next slide, actually. So, um, general fund revenue and expenditures for 25-26. The red number 214,000 is the amount that we are, um, using from the reserve to balance the budget, at least proposed for this year. And if you go to the, um, next slide, it shows the whole number we're anticipating ending the fiscal year, June 30th, 2026, with $790,000 or 11% of the general fund. Um, so, um, you know, I, I think one of the challenges is, you know, ideally you want to start out with your general fund reserve and you want to end a fiscal year with the same or a surplus. And obviously we're not doing, that, that's not the proposal this year. Certainly if the council wants to make cuts to some of the things in this presentation, we can get there. It, it'll, you know, it'll be challenging, but we could get closer to an exactly balanced budget that doesn't use a portion of the reserve. My perspective though, is a little bit that we have some pent-up deferred maintenance and we're addressing some things. And, um, I think after we have a full year of the sales tax, um, it'll be easier to next fiscal year to kind of go, okay, now can we pull back on some of these things and, you know, maybe not expend, um, as much and get to, you know, 15, 16, 17% and slowly start working towards that. I think this first year, it's just there's pent-up demand and it's difficult to get there right out of the gate.
Well, the 250,000 for the fire truck puts us, that's far in excess of the projected deficit. That's a one-time, not necessarily a one-time expense, but it's, it's an expense that has not occurred in our budget. And I, and it's important to note that while we have a million dollars projected at the end of this fiscal year, 475,000 is Measure I monies. So we really only have 500,000. 580,000? So when the end of 794, we are actually adding to our,
Mm-hmm.
because of Measure I, we're actually adding to our deficit or our reserve funding. And that, that's critical mass that we are actually adding to it because we're counting 475,000 this fiscal year, which we otherwise wouldn't have had. So.
I think when I, you know, when I look long-term at the future, the things that concern me are, you know, increases in the sheriff's contract, our, uh, increases in our unfunded pension liability, which keeps growing, in current, you know, the increases of the cost of doing business, health insurance, those kinds of things. Um, because those are just going to keep going up incrementally and it's unavoidable. And, um, you know, that's also a big chunk of this presentation tonight as well. So, I mean, just the doing business part was what, over $600,000 if you go back to that slide, um, before you get to the new stuff. It's almost $700,000 of just, these are all unavoidable expenses. There's, there's no way to cut anything out of that slide. Um, so that's, there's going to be more incremental changes in these things again next year. Um, hopefully not too much, but I do think it's just something we have to be cognizant of. These forecasts and budgeting and economics not etched in stone. It's a constant moving target.
Yeah, I think that, that'd be my, um, not concern, but that's something that I'd like to keep an eye out on is, hey, right now we've got a plan, but there, you know, things go and break. Uh, and, and I, I just want to make sure that we're doing this in a way that in five years, we're not talking about a measure J or something like that, where we have to go back and ask for more revenues to, to, to build up because things are just getting so dang expensive. So, uh, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hanson, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, in meeting with city manager in reference to the staff recommendations, fully aware, you know, there are no surprises on, on the staff recommendations page here, absolutely not. And, uh, Marty mentioned deferred maintenance is, you know, is a, is a good part of this. And I agree with everything I've heard. I agree with Rick, your comments, Matt, your comments as well. Uh, the good news is 25-26 entering into your, will be bottoming, bottoming. You know, 25-26. And since the sales tax measure passed, we, we know that. And yeah, absolutely, Matt, we need to, uh, increase our, our general fund reserve to at least 25%, you know? And over a number of years previously, as indicated on the projected general fund balance, we, we've done just that. And of course, you know, a couple of those years were significant COVID, one-time COVID monies that we put to good use. But with that said, all of the staff recommendations are needed. And I agree with, I agree with every one of, one of them. Uh, and if, you know, we, uh, you know, for example, that, okay, engine two replacement, I've been harping on that for several years now. We have to replace engine two. Okay? Structure fires are going to continue. Fire calls are going to continue. They're going to increase. Uh, you know, the longer we wait, kick that can down the road, we're just, we're, we're risking lives at both ends, both ends. Career, career, uh, career and volunteer fire staff and citizens. It's just, that's not acceptable. And Matt, like you said, things break, right? That's why we have to have our general fund reserve. That's why we have the savings. Things break. A lot of this list, things are broken. All right? Things are just worn out. They're just worn out. We, you know? So I'm in, I'm in, uh, in, in favor of, of all of these recommendations. I know the list has been, you know, there were a lot of ones and it's been whittled down to, to the needs. And these are, these, these are needs in, in my opinion. And with, you know, with the, with the close eye as we're doing, uh, on the ball, on the budget. And Rick, your comments are refreshing to hear. Refreshing to hear. I've been hearing the same thing. I, I mean, I was not in attendance at, at your committee, your, your town hall meeting, but, uh, you know, just, just talking to citizens, I, uh, a number of people I've talked to are, are satisfied with, with, with the council. uh, a number of people I've talked to are, are satisfied with, with, with the council and, and our actions and decisions and being fiscally conservative and trying to do the right thing here. But I want to thank my colleagues on the council and the staff for just, you know, I think, I think, I think it's a solid team. I really do. So I appreciate it. Uh, but, uh, the, you know, those are my comments. Like I say, I, I support the staff recommendations. And just, you know, like, like we're all, I think we're all saying the same thing, move forward cautiously. Keep some money in the bank. Keep some money in the bank. So that's really all I had. Thank you. Marty, thank you for the, the reports. Very, and it's very informative and, uh, you know, a little scary, you know, more than a little scary, but these are, these are real numbers. Like I say, they're, they're not etched in stone. They're fluid numbers or they're moving numbers. And I completely understand why the, the different amendments that come out and come out and come out and come out because they change daily, if not hourly sometimes. So, uh, you know, what broke this morning, chief? I'm sure something probably broke this morning on, on the structural fire, but anyway. So,
My back.
Sure, yeah. But, uh, anyway, now I, 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 I do, I, I do like the staff recommendations. I think it's, I think they're all wise. That's all I had. Thank you.
I, I have one more point to make or something to bring up in just the way we plan on this. Remind me, what's the sunset date for measure I? 15?
15 years, yes.
15. I think some of the decisions that we're going to make here with this are going to affect the 15 year, like, I know it's a couple of elections away, but, uh, we can make some decisions now that make that sunset hurt less. Uh, should we not have to revisit this? So.
That'll be here soon.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Thomas, anything else to?
No, nothing else.
I have one question and this kind of popped out at me. I'm looking at the project, projected general fund reserve. Uh, general fund revenue and expenditures page. These, uh, fiscal year numbers, they seem a lot lower than what I initially remember seeing. I thought that we were closing in the,
Which, I'm not sure which slide you're on. Okay.
The first graph. That was the orange and the blue.
Okay.
I thought that our surplus number, our annual surplus numbers were a lot higher when we initially projected this. I thought we were looking like in the 300 range. Is there a, a general reason for that? Is it some of these expenditures and new? Just the increase in some of the job positions we're trying to fly here?
You looked at it when? Cause this is the first time this has been done.
This, this graph with the line of where we're projected yet with our measure I money?
Yeah, I just got it from, oh, it has been, but, but with what's in the budget, that all these things you heard tonight, this has just been done.
This isn't the total revenue. This isn't the total reserve. This is what we're earning each year.
No, I understand that.
Against that.
I understand that, but I thought when we initially did this and it was projected, it was closer to like 300,000. So I'm, I, and I couldn't find it. I don't have it in my drawer.
That the amount that we were going to use in the,
No, like what our fiscal year 26, 27, uh, up into 27, 28. Those fiscal years, those 171,000, I thought that was closer. Going to be closer to like 300,000 when all, was all setting down with the measure I money.
Um, well, I mean, once Andy puts in things into the budget based on the request, all that, all the out years change. So that's why we update it all the time.
So this is a hundred percent based with a yes on all of this information in here then?
Correct.
Okay. So with the new full-time position for the assistant, the part-time, uh, part-time public works employee, all that's calculated into this new projected graph, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that's how that works. Yeah.
That's just, I wanted to double check that and make sure this wasn't like, this is what we're playing with and trying to add these things to it. So.
No, he's, he's done that based on what I gave him. Then it just populates the rest of the years.
And then this is our rolling number? This isn't an annual? This is a rolling number, correct? So it's not 171 plus next year, 104.
No, it's just, yeah, it's same.
Totally going to roll. So between 26, 27 and 27, 28, we're expected to actually have a deficit for our overall budget.
So I, I think it's important to look at it this way. Go, go to the next page. And you see where it says 15%? On 26, 27, it has a 1.1 million. What, what he's saying on the first page is there'll be a bump up from your base general fund reserve to 1.1 million. So it's a, you're, you're getting a bump from the base year. Does that make sense? So the ending general fund reserve will be based on all this. If everything stays etched in stone, based on tonight, will be 1.1 million in 26, 27.
And I understand that, but I'm just confused about how we go from 794 to 1.1 when we're supposed to have a deficit of 210,000. And then only a gain of 171,000. So how are we going up 500,000? And our, and our surplus? Like between those two numbers, we're only going up.
He's basing it on the concept that the one-time expenses roll out and that they leave the budget.
So roll out.
He, all the one-time expenses you saw are only this year. Now, will there be more? Probably. So this will change again, probably. But he's, the way he does it is, you know, if it's a one-time expense, we only see it in this fiscal year. The future years are only showing the ongoing expense, like an ongoing fire engine payment, an ongoing employee payment. Those will show up in future years, but the one-time expenses all dump out in 26, 27. Now, will we have more one-time expenses next year? Probably. And this will all probably change again. So, but just based on today, that's why it goes up because it's assuming we're not buying another fire engine. We're not buying another, um, public works truck. We're not, all that's not in the future years. So that's why the reserve goes up. But I don't know that it'll stay that way, honestly.
I think what's confusing about this page right here, projected general fund reserve is its caption and it shows negative 210,000. I think that's what's confusing. We have a $10,000 deficit spending, but we started with a million dollar,
The title of the slide, okay, yes, fair enough. That's confusing.
We're going to put another 294,000 to it.
Right. I see what you're saying. The, the title of the slide is confusing.
Slide's confusing.
Uh huh.
Cause it says, general fund reserve says you've got a negative 210,000 and that's not the case.
No, right.
No, that's just our annual.
General fund expenditure. Annualized expenditure. But the reserve is better shown where it says general fund balance. I think the title.
That could be, yes. Yes, I'm sorry for the confusion. I can see that is a confusing title.
It's still clear as mud to me and I, well, yeah, yeah. But that's totally fine. I mean, maybe I'll have you. Play it to me. I'll bring my crayons over and we'll pick up that route.
It was issues that I had with leading up to the finance committee meeting because I wanted to make sure that showing that we were putting money towards the reserve. Like we said, we were going to do. And we're putting 290,000, just under 300,000 dollars towards our reserve. And we start with a million, but that million is because it already includes 475 from the first quarter in the prior fiscal year. You take out that money, we're really in the hole. So we spend a little bit because of the 210, 250,000 dollars for the fire truck and $50,000 for the public works truck. That's 300 grand. One-time expense for that fiscal year actually puts us over no, and a positive accrual on our, on our expense instead of a deficit spending. Right?
It puts us into accrual?
Well, we actually make money. We actually save more money and we don't deficit spend if we didn't have that expense. One-time expense, 250 for the fire truck, we're putting in there, 50,000 for that and the 80,000.
Basically without the fire engine too, it would be a perfectly balanced budget.
Yeah. That's, that's what I'm driving to. I can't say.
Oddly enough, that made a lot of sense to me for some reason. And that's, yeah, that worked for me. Yeah. Totally worked for me. I, sometimes it's just that one like weird way of, sorry.
I can, I can understand. I, I'm not, I'm not a pie chart guy. I hate pie charts. I don't want to look at pie charts. I can, I can look at reports and numbers and figure it out. Sometimes, sometimes graphs and pie charts, uh, do, do muddle the water, I, I think, muddy the water. But those are, those are just my thoughts. Now I, I do, your projected general fund balance, uh, flow chart, I, that's, that's easy to understand, comprehend. Sometimes these, uh, these charts aren't so much. So that's just the way I look at it. So I, 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 I can relate to, to some aspect.
Public accounting can understand it for the non-public accountant type people who are private sector. It's a little difficult to understand.
So.
I totally get it because I'm not a public accountant person.
Public accounting, yeah.
All right. I will say though, that yes, a lot of the changes that we have made that we've discussed, these proposed new, new positions and, and new equipment is vital to the continuation of serving our citizens and, uh, it's, it really is a betterment. It may not be, oh, this is all brand new to us. It's a replacement, but it's replacement that's much needed and will continue to serve us better. So, um, with that being said, thank you guys for your hard work. Um, is there any public comment on item seven B? Don't forget that either. All right, with that.
Mr. Mayor, there's no public comment. Just, just real quick. Yeah, I, I just wanted to also mention the fact that the three personnel, uh, uh, proposals or recommend staff recommendations, they, the full-time administrative analyst position for the, for the chief and, uh, for Joe at, uh, CDNS. The part-time seasonal public works employee and the, uh, uh, moving forward with creating a new library, assistant library director position. Those are all, those are all, uh, vital moves, uh, at my take. Evan, I'm glad you said that. I missed, I missed that. Just as a reminder, uh, several years ago, public works had two part-time employees on a recurring basis. And then down to one and then down to zero. So, yeah, that, that part-time public works employee will be real important, uh, uh, this summer for, for just, for this overall maintenance issues. So, but that's all I had to say. I think those are, and it'll take, uh, you know, just that analyst position will take a, a, a heavy administrative burden load, a paper, a paperwork burden load off of Joe and Nate. So I, I wholeheartedly, uh, support those, uh, recommendations. That's all I had. Evan, thank you.
Uh, this will, yes, this is just.
Just to get any feedback that you have. Yeah. I mean, the next time you see all of this number crunching and everything will be in the formal bu- budget presentation on June 17th. Our special meeting, so.
All right, uh, moving on to item eight, comments and reports. Uh, is there any city council correspondence? I didn't receive any. Unless I lost them. That's me up there. Okay. And city council comments and reports. Is there anything to say over there?
Yeah, I have a library board update. Um, so for the first quarter, uh, City of Willows libraries saw 1,943 total patrons, uh, issued 55 new library cards. Uh, the hiring process has started for the part-time children's librarian to, uh, ensure that the ramp up for the summer programs gets done. Uh, and then there was a children's book and crafts, craft sale, uh, on April 12th, and I hope that went well.
Perfect. Councilmember Hanson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I promised at our last meeting that I, when I said I had nothing to report, it was a busy week of meetings during a busy time of year. It was interesting. So, yeah, a series of meetings last week, starting off on, on Monday, the 14th with the, a regular, uh, Glen groundwater authority board of directors meeting. There are always busy agendas, uh, still, uh, discussion in reference to the, uh, our, our approved groundwater sustainability plan as we move forward with, uh, with, uh, domestic well mitigation, development and groundwater demand management program development. A lot of moving parts, complicated stuff, but we had a very productive meeting on, on, uh, April 14th. The following Thursday on, uh, April, was it, uh, 17th, April 17th. The mayor was, was present for the, for the Glen County Regional Transit Committee meeting. We had our, uh, transit committee and Glen County Transportation Commission meeting in Orland. We're back to alternating. Uh, fairly light agenda on the RTC, uh, some, uh, basically some routine business there. Heavy agenda on the transportation commission. RTC, so go for it. But on the Glen County Transportation Commission, like I say, heavy, heavy agenda, uh, uh, of, of note, uh, we, we approved a $370,000 plan for the, uh, right-of-way and parcel fabric contract award to Pro West. That's the, the vendor. There were two proposals and, and these are all through, uh, through dedicated, dedicated funds. We have the funding. We have the funding in, in the budget. That's not an issue. But, uh, this will definitely benefit City Willows and, as well as City of Orland, but, but big time City Willows. Because right now we're paying for, uh, unbeknownst to me, I mean, the more, the longer we're in these roles, the more we learn, but oftentimes our, our contractors on any project, on any roadway project or public project, they've got to know where, where, where the property lines are, where the easements are, where the right-of-ways are, right, Joe? Okay, that's part of it. Right now we're paying our contractors to do that research. This will update all of that. It'll be comprehensive county one. So it'll benefit Glen County, City Willows and the City of Orland. Uh, definitely. This is, so we had two options from the same, from the same firm. One was a patch job, some duct tape and baling wire for, I don't know, 100, 140,000 or so. To, you know, well, we can sort of kind of fix this with these antiquated systems. I'm talking about county systems. Uh, no guarantees, but we can make it, we can, we can make it work. You know, we can make it work, but you know, how many times have, have we in this body, uh, for example, as well as the other bodies that we sit on? We're always being fis-, we're fiscally conservative, right? We're extremely fiscally conservative. But how many times it's happened? A number of times, I, I know it's, it's you gentlemen have been on the council. It's happened a number of times. We try to save money and we end up spending more money because we went the cheap route, right? So this is going to be a comprehensive, uh, uh, up-to-date, uh, technological review of, of all of the, uh, right-of-way and parcel fabrics within the camp. So that was, that was a major, the major action item that the commission took on Thursday. Although by the next day, Good Friday, we had, uh, a joint Coliseum Groundwater Authority Board of Directors meeting and Glen Groundwater Authority Board of Directors meeting, joint meeting here in Willows. Were, uh, they're scheduled for once a month, uh, give or take as we work through the, the demand management and the well mitigation, uh, projects, which are extensive. It was a, it was a successful meeting. It was a good meeting, very informational meeting. Uh, our contract, our, uh, Jeff Davids with Davids Engineering. He knows the engineer, Davids Engineering and Jeff, they know water. They're water scientists. That's what they do. But being in the ag business, uh, the 1977 drought was, was the highlight in, in my life. I was 18 then. Uh, just, just out of high school farming with my dad and going to school. And just getting into law enforcement. And anyway, the 1977 drought was a big deal. It was a big, major deal. That was the worst drought of mine. It, you know, up until the last few years, it's drier and drier and drier years. So on a graph chart, even though I don't like graph charts, but the 1977, there you go, Marty, this is 1977, uh, on a, on a, on a, on a full page, we'll have a full page. The 1977 drought year was a blue blip like that. Now, our normal years now, even wet years, the blue blips are way down here in the graph. It's scary. And that's groundwater. That, you know, we've experienced sub-basin wide, sub-basin wide. I'm not saying our, you know, we have low groundwater levels everywhere. I'm not saying that. The, the, those are, those are the totals, the sub-basin wide, the, the new normal. Even, and we had a wet year this year, so we had quite a bit of recovery. But the farming practices that are going on now, okay, we all need water, domestic agriculture. We all need water, right? Environmental. The, the irrigation practices that are going now, uh, the crop types are depleting the groundwater in many parts of the basin. It is not sustainable. It needs to stop. So with that said, it, it's interesting stuff. I won't, I won't go on anymore. But there's a lot of work being done and we move forward. So, again, busy week, productive week, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. That's probably enough.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Thomas?
See, he's yawning.
It was not you. It was not you. I promised. No report. Been up since five. I have a quick report on the regional transit committee. Um, one of the issues that they're having right now, they are getting a new, um, electric vehicle. One of the problems they're running into though, is electricity for their electric vehicle. So they're, um, currently right now, they are working on getting the adapter when they get the vehicle delivered. currently, right now, they are working on getting the adapter when they get the vehicle delivered. So they can either charge it behind Black Bear or, uh, over at Walmart. Which led me to want to request that, uh, either city manager Marty Brown or Joe Bencourt bring back with the city, um, solar project, us possibly tying in electric charging at both the city hall and possibly the fire department for one bay each. Essentially pre-planning for when carb comes in to start, uh, coming after the city as well. It's one of those, if they're going to be doing the project, maybe we can squeeze it in there with it rather than wait till we're required to have it and then it'd be a bigger expense at that time. So, don't know if that's something that we can.
Well, we, we periodically get, see grants, um, get announcements come through about possible funding. We have looked at them from time to time. I haven't really um, looked at consideration for city hall, but that's a great idea. I've always looked at the mall. Um, although I do have a plug-in and it's a hybrid. And so I'd love to have one here at city hall. But, um, that said, uh, mostly the mall was like thinking as an attraction to get people off the highway and come down and have lunch and stuff like that. Now, the last time we looked at one, I don't know, Joe, it didn't, did it seem like it was gonna?
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily thinking for public use. I was thinking for when the city's required to, hey, our public works vehicle needs.
Right.
You know, uh, chief's Dodge Ram is no longer gas-powered. It's, you know, a giant battery that we don't want to put the fire out of. Will be fun. So, um, that was kind of where my thought process was as well. Uh, yes, I do like the solar project at the city mall as well, but.
Yep, the, uh, we do get some exemptions just due to fleet size from having to go into those, those next levels, but it's all coming. And we can definitely, I mean, there's pricing, there's rebates that come with those chargers. Um, when you buy an electric car, then you get a rebate with the charger, those kinds of programs that can make it better. So. Um, and then the other considerations is, is a, the, the electrical service to support the charger as well. I mean, if it's not a lot usually, um, sometimes you don't have to upgrade. Sometimes it's the two hundred amp service upgrade. Um, but as Marty mentioned, there's more limited opportunities and grants for fleets than there is for the public. Uh, but we do keep an eye out for them and even offset a cost kind of thing. So absolutely.
Are you suggesting that we cost out what it would cost to do it here and then come back and share with you?
My, my thought is, is if they're going to be here messing with all of our electricity or PG&E and all sorts of power here, why not set up a place for, hey, we might have to throw a vehicle charger in at the same time? Maybe it's not at public works building like might be ideal, but at least we have one or something for them to use if one of our vehicles ends up needing to be electric.
What they, what they do have for, uh, new parking lots, and this is a little different, but they require you to have, say you've got over twenty-five spots or twenty, at twenty-five spots, you're required to stub up for four electrical vehicle chargers. So you don't have to necessarily install the charger. So that's, that's another option that gets us to the point of connection while they're doing things without actually installing the charger. So that, that might be a good halfway point that, hey, the, the infrastructure's ran, the meter's good, everything's fine. It's just connecting the charger piece of it.
Yeah, and that's kind of where my thought was, is hey, next time we get a public works supervisor's vehicle, it's electric or it has to be electric or, you know, whatever requirement might be, kind of like RTC came across, they had to get something electric. What's, uh, you know?
We know it's coming.
Where are we going to charge it at?
Yeah.
Are we already going to have the power supply? So we're not running into these type of issues? Cause I don't think we want it parked at Black Bear all the way out at Walmart when we need it. So.
Hundred mile range, hundred mile, yeah.
There, there. And that will only be servicing the Willow's area. So it will be strictly for, uh, Willow's residents. Um, that electric vehicle and it will be allowed to hold a one, one person in a wheelchair and I believe five other passengers?
Yeah, six passengers, I believe.
One wheelchair, wheelchair, yeah. So, um, so that, that is coming and it is, uh, strictly to transport people here around Willow's. Um, so that'd be great. With that, that's all I have. Um, city manager's report.
A couple of things. Um, engine four is back working. I did hear back from the fire chief before he left that it's back working as of yesterday.
Uh, yeah, I was going to say it's, uh, engine three and truck four are both back in service again.
Oh, well, thank you.
Both got used very heavily this morning.
Yeah.
Uh, for us. Work.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, Councilmember Hanson asked me about it earlier.
Four hours today. They did their jobs today. So.
Very good. Um, and then, uh, the other items, just a reminder that Monday, May fifth, uh, at two o'clock, the council will be holding a council priority visioning workshop, two to five. It's on your calendars. It's Monday, May fifth. We, um, put that in your calendar a long time ago. So that's two weeks from yesterday. And then also.
At what time?
Monday, May fifth at two o'clock. It's an afternoon workshop in here, council chambers. The other reminder is June tenth, council meeting is canceled as we know two council members will be absent. And we scheduled a special council meeting for June seventeenth. And that'll be the first review of the budget and then we'll have our regular meeting a week later on the twentieth.
Marty, Marty, can you send everyone?
Absolutely.
However, my email, we'll worry about it when I'm done and when I finish, when I have time in the week. I'm up. It, it's acting up again. I'll talk to you about that later. So use my,
Oh.
Use my alternate email, please.
Okay.
It's, I'm dead in the water again, but I don't have time to mess with right now.
All right. With that, we will be going into a, uh, closed sessions for items nine A and nine B. Nine A is employee negotiations and nine B is public employee performance evaluations. Before we go into closed session, is there any public comment on these two items? Seeing none, we will enter into closed session at seven fifty-three, seven fifty-seven, sorry, correct. All right, welcome back. We will be, uh, resuming from closed session at nine oh five on item nine A, employee negotiations, directions were given to negotiator, and on item nine B, evaluation complete. With that, we will go to adjournment at nine oh six PM. Have a good night.